Five o'clock on Monday, July 18th. I would like to call the meeting to order. Item number two, roll call. Gordy Dowd.
Here.
Michelle Hemner. Here. Michael Holden.
Here.
Tony Corby. Here. Heather McBride.
Here.
Kevin Grover.
Here.
Please stand with the allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Item 4.0, preview and approval of agenda. Could I get a motion to approve the agenda as presented? Second.
Chair, if I can add, I have to run them out here. I have one correction for the applicable policy.
Okay.
If you approve it, that is with that.
With the correction?
Yeah.
Okay. Could I have a motion to approve the agenda with the correction for the L O policy?
So.
The motion in the second.
Well, the motion's second, Sarah. Could you reprove the motion with the... Do you reprove?
Yes.
Okay. Any further discussion? Out of favor? Aye. Out opposed? Motion carried. Item 5.0, open forum. Nothing for open forum. Old business 6.0. Approve the 2018 through 2027 long-term facility plan. Could I have a motion to approve that?
So.
Okay, and a motion second. Discussion, please.
For the most part, I did not end up, or we did not end up, a lot of people. I got a few comments from people, again, I guess, knowing that you're approving mainly 18, with the idea that as things come up, you know, we'd love to say everything will be done. I did mention to a couple of people looking at 18, the storage building is a piece that I'm not overly, my guess is that would come out first, you know, thing. You know, if we needed more money for roof or whatever, that that takes a higher precedence. And then, of course, going on, we'll be back at the same point a year from now. But other than that, I think it's good to go, we submit, you know, to the state. And again, it's just like last year, a good chunk of it got done, but things come up. And so, it's gonna...
They always do.
Yeah, water main's gonna break, or a compressor's gonna go, or whatever. So, that's all I have on that.
All right, thank you. Any further discussion? Out of favor? Aye. Out opposed? Motion carried. New business, 7.0. Adopters' motion relating to the election of school board members and calling the school district general election. Could I have a motion?
So.
Second. I have a motion and a second. Roll call. Gordy Dowd.
Do you wanna read it?
Further discussion? Yeah, well.
I can clear your...
I need to, yeah, I'm sorry. Member Gordy introduced the following resolution and moved its adoption. Resolution relating to election of school board members and calling the school district general election. Be it resolved by the School Board of Independent School District Number 361, State of Minnesota, as follows. One, it is necessary for the school district to hold a general election for the purpose of electing four members for terms of four years each. The clerk shall include on the ballot the names of individuals who file or have filed affidavits of candidacy during this period established for filing such affidavits, as though they had been included by name in this resolution. The clerk shall not include on the ballot the names of individuals who file timely affidavits of withdrawal in the manner specified by law. Two, the general election is hereby called and elected to be held in conjunction with the state general election on Tuesday, the 8th day of November, 2016. Three, pursuant to Minnesota Statute Section 205a.111, the precincts and polling places for this general election are those polling places and precincts or parts of precincts located within the boundaries of the school districts and which have been established by the cities or towns located in whole or in part within the school district. The voting hours at those polling places shall be the same as for the state general election. Item four, the clerk is hereby authorized and directed to cause written notice of said election to be provided to the county auditor of each county in which the school district is located in whole or in part at least 74 days before the date of said election. The notice shall include the date of said general election and the office or offices to be voted on said general election. Any notice given prior to the date of the adoption, this resolution is ratified and confirmed in all respects. The clerk is hereby authorized and directed to cause notice of said general election to be posted at the administrative offices of the school district at least 10 days before the date of said general election. The clerk is hereby authorized and directed to cause a sample ballot to be posted at the administrative offices of the school district at least four days before the date of said general election and to cause two sample ballots to be posted in each polling place on election day. The sample ballot shall not be printed by the same color paper as the official ballot. The sample ballot for a polling place must reflect the office's candidate and rotation sequence on the ballots used in that polling place. The clerk is hereby authorized and directed to cause notice of said general election to be published in the official newspaper of the school district for two consecutive weeks, with the last publication being at least one week before the date of said election. The notice of elections so posted and published shall state the officers who fill set forth in the form of the ballot below and shall include information concerning each established precinct and polling place. The clerk is authorized and directed to cause the rules and instructions for the use of the optical scan voting system to be posted in each polling place on election day. Item five, the clerk is authorized and directed to acquire and distribute such election materials as may be necessary for the proper conduct of this election and generally to cooperate with election authorities conducting other elections on that date. The clerk and members of the administration are authorized and directed to take such actions as may be necessary to coordinate this election with those other elections, including entering into agreements or understandings with appropriate election officials regarding preparation, distribution of ballots, election administration, and cost sharing. Item six, the clerk is further authorized and directed to cause or to cooperate with the proper election officials to cause ballots to be prepared for use at said election in substantially the following form, with such changes in form, color, and instructions as may be necessary to accommodate an optical scan voting system. And, that's a sample ballot. Optical scan ballots must be printed in black ink on white material, except that marks to be read, but the automatic tabulating equipment may be printed in another color ink. The name of the precinct and machine readable identification must be printed on each ballot. Voting instructions must be printed on the top of the ballot on each side that includes ballot information. The instructions must include an illustration of the proper marks to be used in a vote. Lines for initials of at least two election judges must be printed on one side of the ballot so the judge's initials are visible when the ballot are enclosed in a secrecy sleeve. Item seven, the name of each candidate for office at this election shall be rotated with the names of the other candidates for the same office in the manner specified in Minnesota law. Item eight, if the school district will be contracting to print the ballots for this election, the clerk is hereby authorized and directed to prepare instructions for the printer for layout of the ballot. Before a contract in excess of $1,000 is awarded for printing ballots, a purchase shall, requested by the election official, furnish in accordance with Minnesota Statute Section 204d.04, a sufficient bond, letter of credit, or certified check acceptable to the clerk in an amount not less than $1,000, conditioned on printing the ballots in conformity with the Minnesota election law and the instructions delivered. The clerk shall set the amount of the bond, letter of credit, or certified check in an amount equal to the value of the purchase. Item nine, individuals designated as judges for the state general election shall act as election judges for this election at the various polling places and shall conduct said election in the manner described by law. The election judges shall act as clerks of the election, count the ballots cast, and submit them to the school board and canvass in the manner provided for the school district elections. A general election must be canvassed between the 3rd and 10th day following the general election. Item 10, the school district clerk shall make all campaign financial reports required to be filed in the school district under Minnesota Statute Section 211a.02 and received on or after May 17, 2016... 16? 17?
16.
No, that's when it became effective. Okay. All right, sorry. I was just confused there. So, May 17, 2014, available on the school district's website. The clerk must post a report on the school district's website as soon as possible, but no later than 30 days after the date of the receipt of the report. The school district must make a report available on the school district's website for four years from the date the report was posted to the website. The clerk must also provide the Campaign Finance and Public Disclosure Board with a link to the section of the website where reports are made available. The motion for the adoption of the foregoing resolution was duly seconded by Tony and vote being taken thereof. Gordy.
Aye.
Michelle. Aye. Michael.
Aye.
Tony.
Aye.
Heather.
Aye.
And upon vote being taken thereof, the following voted in favor thereof. Gordy, Michelle, Michael, Tony, and Heather. And none voted against, whereupon said resolution was duly passed and adopted. Item 8.0, adopt resolution calling special election to fill school board vacancy.
So.
Do you want me to read this one?
No, I got it. Get my reading voice back in, back into it here.
Basically, just say, up until, up until item four is a little bit different, otherwise it's the same exact resolution.
Okay. Member Michael Holden introduced the following resolution and moved its adoption. Resolution calling special election to fill school board vacancy. Whereas a vacancy exists in the office, the school board member with the term expiring the first Monday of January 2018, and whereas one year or more remains in the unexpired term, now therefore be resolved by the School Board of Independent School District Number 361, State of Minnesota, as follows. Item one.
Head west on 11th Street toward US 70th South.
Shall accept affidavits of candidacy for this office during the same filing period as acceptable to the school district special election. Item two, it is necessary to hold a special election to elect individual to fill vacancy in the term of school board member expiring the first Monday of January 2018. Item three, the special election shall be held in conjunction with November 8, 2016, state general election, and the polling places, precincts served, hours of voting, and election judges shall be the same as a primary election. Item four, the clerk is hereby authorized and directed to cause written said notice of special election provided in the county auditor of each county in which the school district is located in whole or in part at least 74 days before the date of said special election. The notice shall include the date of said special election and the office to be voted on at said special election. The clerk may combine this notice with the notice of the general election. The clerk is hereby authorized and directed to cause notice of said special election to be posted at the administrative offices of the school district at least 10 days before the date of said election. The clerk is hereby authorized and directed to cause a sample ballot to be posted at the administrative offices of the school district at least four days before the date of said election and to cause two sample ballots to be posted in each polling place on election day. The sample ballot should not be printed on the same colored paper as the official ballot. The sample ballot for a polling place shall reflect the office's candidates and rotation sequence on the ballots used in the polling place. The clerk is hereby authorized and directed to cause notice of said special election to be published in the official newspaper of the district for two consecutive weeks, with the last publication being at least one week before the date of said election. The clerk is authorized and directed to cause the rules and instructions for use in optical scan voting system to be voted, to be posted in each polling place on election day. The notice of elections so posted and public shall state the office to be filled and set forth in the form of the ballot below and shall be included information concerning each established precinct and polling place. Item five, the name of candidates to fill a vacancy who have filed affidavit candidacy must be listed on the ballot under the separate heading Special Election for School Board Member to Fill Vacancy in Term Expiring January 7, 2018. Their names must be listed, as though they had been included by name in this resolution. The clerk shall not include on the ballot the names of individuals who file timely affidavits of withdrawal in the manner specified by law. Item six, the name of each candidate to fill the vacancy in office at this special election shall be rotated with the names of the other candidates to fill the vacancy in the office in the manner specified in Minnesota law. Item seven, the ballot shall be in substantially the following form. The ballot is listed. Item eight, the school district clerk shall make all campaign financial reports required to be filed with the school district under Minnesota Statute Section 211a.02 and received on or after May 17, 2014, available on the school district's website. The clerk must post the report on the school district's website as soon as possible, but no later than 30 days after the date of the receipt of the report. The school district must make a report available on the school district's website for four years from the date the report was posted to the website. The clerk must also provide the Campaign Finance and Public Disclosure Board with a link to the section of the website where the reports are being made available. The motion for the adoption of the foregoing resolution was duly seconded by member Heather and upon vote being taken thereof. Gordy Dowd.
Aye.
Michelle Hemner. Aye. Michael Holden.
Aye.
Tony Corby. Aye. Heather McBride.
Aye.
All voted in favor thereof and none voted against, whereupon said resolution was declared to be passed and adopted. Item 9.0, receive the fills of 15 and 16 summary of student account activity.
And that is just in there. Technically, we have to, or need to give you this once a year. It won't be acted on at the next meeting or anything. It's just one of the requirements, so, for different accounts. If you have questions, I don't know, but you just need to receive this annually.
Anybody have any questions? Item 10.0, update of Arvina Elevator Project with discussion of possible action on request for handicap accessible entrance and bathrooms on the lower level.
Okay, first of all, the project is, we have permits that we need. It took a while. There was a hangup in, actually, they thought the city could issue the permit, but they couldn't, that was the state. So, we have everything that we need, and up north is, I haven't been able to work this week, was it working or not? We got to go ahead to go. So, that is taking care of a couple of things that have come up and there's documents included in your package. We've been talking about the handicap accessible bathroom. You know, that's been going. And the plan there is to do, next to the ladies bathroom, there was an office there. It would be to make that a, I'm gonna say, male or female bathroom changing area, that type deal. Was not part of the elevator bid or anything. The other thing that has come up that, I guess, we really hadn't thought about, but obviously makes sense, is we clearly need a handicap accessible door outside the building. You don't have the answer. And so, obviously, you need a little ramp there as well. So, up north, put together some proposals here. And if you would look, I just wanna give you a little insight, not that we'll talk about whether we wanna do something instantly or not. The first piece is to just pour additional, or pour a slab at a, you know, little bit of a grade, 6 by 10 there, and attach it to the existing slab. And the plan is to use the door down by the garage door. If it doesn't look like that, slabs move much. When you come in that door is where the handicap ramp is to get up into the bleacher area. So, it makes, I think, makes most sense to put it down on that end. So, if we just add down, for the most part, rebar into the existing slab of the building as well as the slab, if it's the patio or whatever you wanna call it. They can do that, they leave it down about a half inch, because that's acceptable by code, roughly, to say $1,700 if we chose to do that. The second one was, they were looking at originally doing that same concept, a little bigger version, down by the door, right where the elevator's gonna be. But their plan was to go down and put a cross, cross, free footed, because what you call it, go down. So that they, for the most part, were guaranteed without moving anywhere. Well, as you can see, it's quite, you know, quite expensive to do that. Again, there's no guarantees in this area, but it looks like that other slab hasn't moved much over the years. So, they have given a price on it, so that is what is there. The third page is the price for putting in a new door with a handicap accessible button. It has some, like, side light or panels on it. It's a single door that opens. They'd use the opening that's there. And you can see the price. And then, you know, push button electrical, all that stuff. The fourth one is for the complete redo of the office upstairs into a bathroom. Okay? And again, is what it is for price. But I guess I would like to give you my, at least, thoughts, and then we can have some discussion. My thought, the first page on moving that slab and talking with Mr. Holt, would be to have our crew form in and do a graded, and do it ourself. You know, as far as, I'm not guaranteeing it's gonna be a 30-year deal, but I think, you know, and again, I'm sure there's five, 600 bucks in concrete, but I think we can do that. We think that our crew can do that, and if we can get that done. The door piece, I'll just be honest with you, I would like to, I'm not saying there's any wrong with the price. I have no idea, would be to ask Mr. Ewald, which does the majority of our other door stuff in the building, at least for a price. I think we do need to do the door. You know, just the idea that, the idea is if someone came in a wheelchair and was stuck outside, you have an issue. So, I think it's gonna have to come back to you, but he's not available right now to give us a price. But I just think it's, you know, it's not part of the original bid. At least we have a couple of prices that way. And so, I would, I guess, recommend that I bring that back to you. The question on the bathroom, okay, again, we're gonna have to do something. I'm not saying, you know, obviously, sooner is rather than later. If you want me to move ahead, we should probably get another price. You know, I mean, I'm not saying there's anything wrong with this price. It wasn't part of the original bid. It's not of a value that you have to. But I guess it would just, in my mind, make sense to ask someone else, you know, for... And there's some things on here, I don't, we don't have tile in our bathrooms right now. And it's something you could always come back and do. You know, they put, they put in making it look like, you know, a bathroom, so to speak. Or we could put in a layer of paint on it. They're not, I don't think there's a drain in here, you know, that's part of the, you have to have. And there's some ways, I think, we can reduce the price a little bit. But it's gotta be fair to Holt, you know, we're gonna take the tile off. We give a surprise, we call it tile. They just, like I said, the architect has some, they can give us a price, and so they can put it together there. But I guess, again, it's up to you guys what you, you wanna go for the bathroom, get it here, be able to dumb-dun. I mean, it's not, it's hip and a noose, or, you know, it's kind of dry, that's what it is. Or do you wanna wait a year? I mean...
Is there any harm in waiting?
Well, technically, you need to be compliant, you need, need... Went this far along, I mean, I, hopefully, people would be sympathetic, like, we're doing as much as we can.
Understanding.
We got the door. I mean, I don't think they're gonna change, change it shut with what we've done, you know? We would opt for, we plan for next summer for the bathroom, because, you know, I don't think we can wait 10 years. We're moving in the right direction, we know what we have to do, you know, to be in compliance. But that's the question, do we wanna...
The bathroom that's there right now, is that?
It's not handicap accessible.
So, it kinda goes hand in hand if you're gonna do the door and the elevator?
Done.
It just sounds like it's just gonna be another issue if you don't, right?
Well, we have to plan, either do it, and get it done, or plan to do it next year, and hit it with the bathroom.
Can we do it next year without waiting in reserve?
Well, we'll take it, you know, add it to the facility plan, you know? And if something else comes off, you know, type of deal. And so, I mean, that's the only difference in the flexibility, I guess, we could, you know, the reality is, is 30,000 or over, 20,000, whatever, you know, something is getting pushed back. And I'm, I'm okay with that, as long as we are planning to do, you know, please, if we're not gonna be able to wait till someone complains, it would be too long, I think, if we...
Well, budget-wise, I just think you can wait and then, you know, look at your facility plan for next year, see where you can...
It's gonna have to go in, so we might take if we don't do it this year.
Is there any additional bathrooms downstairs that we could use for a year?
None of them are technically handicap accessible. I mean, not to say, I can't say we haven't gotten someone in, like, one of the locker rooms down there. I'm sure someone has over time, you know, to use a bathroom. They could get upstairs for that. But I'm guessing there are bathrooms, and they'll be able to get to the bathroom. It's just, you know, the skulls aren't wide enough to, you know, if it's a person with a walker, yeah, they could get in around crutches or something like that. But if it's a true wheelchair, you know, situation, we don't have that.
Well, I think the modifications, the other items on here, like our maintenance pouring slab, and checking with you off about the door. I think that's the good direction to go to, and at the very least, just getting another price for the bathroom, but...
Do you want me to get a price and see what it's at?
Yeah.
I would say get a price and see what it's at, but leaning more towards maybe planning for it.
I will be back, like I say, you know, I guess, move something for you on the door, as well as the... And there is an attached kind of guy here, and we can just...
Will there be additional handicap parking signs out by that door, then?
The plan, we're gonna move the handicap doors down there, or handicap signs down to by that door.
Is it just one?
No, there's for sure two. Whatever technically you need by code, I mean, we can put three, four. Just so you're aware, I don't know, I guess I'll make it public. Now, my plan is to work with the hockey coaches. I would like, and I'm saying coaches, because that typically has been an area that the students and coaches have mainly filled up. And I guess my plan, once it's frozen, it's usable, would be to ask that that be a public entrance, because I think what we're gonna end up doing is closing one of the top doors, the ticket taker upstairs, one downstairs, ask the coaches and players to park out of the student. And, like you say, being more customer-driven, those are very close parking places if you can park down there. And try and encourage people, you know, if you're good with the steps and stuff, can you please use, you know, leave it for some of our older and less mobile people? And it's gonna be a plan, you know, and I think they'll be supportive. It's kinda like owning a business and having a employee park right in front of the door.
Right.
Some do, some don't, but it's in customer service, it's not for us. So, that's, that's my plan, to work with the coaches and try and get that to have practice. Not an issue for when it comes, gain the time, and see if we can, name days, and see if we can do it.
Sounds good. Thank you. Item 11.0, program consent. 11.1, promote donations in the amount of $10,881.07. Mr. Key Foundation, science fair cookies, $144.26. Bronco Hall of Fame, and member of Phil Howard, $30. Thanks Small Path, Wade Grant, preschool program, $7,500. Kerry Park, hockey tournament concussion testing, $500. Boise Paper, IC361 for general education, $1,500. Boise Paper, seven loans of witches for playgrounds, $1,200. Shwan's Cares, FHS PBIS, $7.46. Item 11.2, approve the minutes for the regular meeting of June 20, 2016. 11.3, approve the bills to payable amount dating to $333,438.95. Approve the concurrent enrollment agreement with RRCC for 2016-17 school year. 11.5, approve membership in MSBA for the period of 7/1/16 to 6/30/17 in the amount of $4,971. 11.6, approve the food service consulting agreement between IC361 and INAC Incorporated for the 2016-17 school year. 11.7, receive a donation summary report. 11.8, adjust in-service date from September 1st to August 29th on the 2016-17 school calendar. Could I have a motion to approve the consent agenda items as presented?
So.
Second. I have a motion, a second. Any further discussion?
I'd just comment on a couple of things. First of all, the food service agreement, Sue and I met with a person from INAC to get a quote, and, or what they could present to us, and offer us. Most importantly, for a year down the road, when Sue is not with us. Very competent, and I thought it was a very good meeting. They gave us a quote, and I'm gonna... it was a very good meeting, they gave us a quote, and it'll be roughly, and prices obviously go up with the time, at sixteen thousand, or what they can offer, and be our food service leader, they'll be onsite two days a week, or sorry, two days a month, and then they offer support from, you know, they're available all the time, there's certain things they do, there's certain things we will have to do within, sixteen thousand dollar pricing, of course, they would like, and I think we would like to have them in sooner rather than later, and so they're open to working with us, working with Sue, she can help with some things, get in, you know, working with our staff, there is some training we have to do either way that we haven't done, new changes that they'll do for us, and so I'm asking for flexibility, it won't be the sixteen thousand, it may be eight thousand, maybe nine, ten thousand, but they'll feel it out, and so the idea would be our head cooks and different people that are there to help, will have some experience, there's things to be done as far as getting like our bright quotes and different things that they will do, and they will have the vendor, you know, but that's already a place we're working with, that we have for this year, so I, I think it's a good fit, they are happy to work with us, you know, Sue, if you want to comment, anything?
Well, it's, they've passed more legislation, or more rigorous licensure requirements for food service directors, so the days of just hiring someone from within and letting them fill in, like happened when I started this, twenty, thirty-five years ago, you can't do that any longer, you have to have certain licensure, and so, I, I feel that this is a really good fit, too, and they have a very good reputation, they've been around for a long time, and the individual who's in charge, whose company it is, also serves as a food service director for Grand Rapids School District, and they were the group that came up and gave some observations and some suggestions two years ago, and it did result in our fund balance, I followed through on what they suggested, and that's when our fund balance took a turn for a whole lot better than, you know, it had been, so they've come highly recommended, and they worked with a number of districts.
Well, I think it's a good idea, and I think it'd be good to get them in here sooner than later, so they can get a feel for, you know, what Sue does, and make sure everything gets taken care of before...
The staff might transition better, too, if they didn't, you know, feel like, okay, I'll be holding them, and maybe just kinda wanna change, it would be, be awesome.
And the only other thing I was gonna mention on the food service day, the switch, the reason for that is Tim Missy and I went down to a training, I suppose it's been a couple of weeks ago, Mount Levan Walker, and found the North West Service Co-op, there's a group there that has done some work online in curriculum, there's a person that is a reading specialist, that will come and work with us, looking at some point of assessment, and they're willing to work with us very easily, because they are funded through the state, or the service co-op is, or funded through different managers, I shouldn't say teams, but they're willing to work with us, but, of course, at the end of the year, it's hard to get, they're locked up with certain, they could come on that Monday of that week, so I, again, asked to get approved by the board, but I did send out an email letting the staff know I was proposing this a couple of weeks ago, or whatever, I've got two people that have some minor conflicts, and so I need, as long as we're willing to work with them, you know, taking it to school, you know, type, you know, we can get the majority of our staff here, I reckon, so it's not being more days, Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday, instead of Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday, and so we would love, I'm speaking for administration, to get them on board, get them working with us, and be able to get a full day, that's what we can do, so, that's why that's on there. It was very informative, it was a data, examining data, pulling data, and it was probably, probably the best that I've been, as far as that topic goes, and we were very walking out, you have two weeks of work, figure out what you really have, we had a lot of useful stuff.
Thanks.
An hour into it, maybe, because, so it was good.
Oh, yeah, that's good, thank you, sounds good. Any further discussion?
I was just looking at this Think Small Pathway grant, is that a state grant, or what is Think Small Pathway?
I haven't read through, I'm gonna be honest, is preschool grant they, they put in, or?
They have one for childcare, too, it's just a small company that you can apply for anytime, for grants, through the state, I believe it comes from.
And donations summary?
What this is, and it is put together by the business office, and I was gonna mention something here, it goes through all the different groups that have got money, and kind of where they start, where they end up, and it's, it's very, how would I say, I think it's very informative to look through, and it's almost mind-boggling when you look at the money, you know, this is for the most part donations, and I mean, and I don't wanna hit on anyone, and it could be various groups, but that's, you look and start putting the numbers together, I don't...
You know what the total is?
Donations?
Yes, yes, ma'am.
Total, total?
Total donation received, total donation spent.
But it kinda goes through each group as far as what was taken, and what was, and where it came from, and spent, and so on.
You sure gonna want it from Boise?
And in fact, I have a comment later, they donated some other stuff this week, or last week, and yeah, they've done very well.
You have, you have a total here for each?
Each page, I wanna say, if you recall back to your budget, it's, it's pushing over, pushing two hundred thousand donation, it's been rolling each, you know, each year, over the last two or three, we have that Nike poll, I don't remember the board stuff with you, but that was on one of the sheets, and it, and it misses to the school, you know, this is not donations to boost your clubs or anything else, this is stuff that just come, come through the school.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed, motion carried. Item twelve point zero, personnel consent. Twelve point one, approve the two thousand sixteen seventeen contract with Mike Weasley, technology coordinator. Twelve point two, accept the resignation due to retirement of Mark Thorpe, his last day of employment, July twenty-ninth, two thousand sixteen. Item twelve point three, approve extended time for the following positions: high school counselor in twenty days, dean of students, twelve days, school nurse, as needed with superintendent approval. Twelve point four, designate Kevin Grover superintendent as the identified official with authority to authorize user access to MDEA secure websites. Twelve point five, appoint the following individuals for two thousand sixteen seventeen: Jody Hamilton, homo-syzean, Melissa Tate, LEA representative for filing applications under Public Law one oh three dash three eight two for Title One and Title Two. Kevin Grover, Title Four Officer, Title Nine, sorry, Kimmy Emerson, Human Rights Officer and Alternative Title Nine Officer. Mark Loat, Secondary Section five oh four Officer and Alternative Elementary Section five oh four Officer. Melissa Tate, Elementary Section five oh four Officer, Alternative Human Rights Officer, Alternate Secondary Section five oh four Officer. Could I have a motion to approve the personal consent agenda items as presented?
No.
I have a motion, a second, any further discussion?
Couple comments, first of all, the high school counselor, dean of students, school nurse, those are typical, what we've had, in this, we need to do that each year to allow those days to be used. The resignation, I would thank Mr. Thorpe, who's sitting in the audience here, for many years of service, assuming you approve, that's the only one that happens in the home, but, thank you very much.
Thank you, Mark.
I would like to say that, too, thank you, come up with a lot of different projects over the years, and always been great to work with, and you did a great job.
For ninety-five percent, it was fine.
That's good, that's good.
That's a good person. The other piece I'd just like to comment on, Mr. Weasley's contract there, there is a copy in here, a packet there, he, this one needs to be taken care of as well as the APWLS, and then everything is in place for, until the end of the year, he came in to meet with me, it was with some information, as far as, he was at sixty-seven thousand the year prior, with some others from around the area, how do I say, I can't, it's not, consortium down in Grand Rapids, is significantly higher, it starts at eighty-one, eighty-two, and it moves five or six steps, I think it was HIBBY, no, HIBBY was eighty-four, and it goes up to ninety-seven roughly, the Grand Rapids Consortium, their assistant gets seventy-one thousand, their director gets eighty-two thousand, I got some numbers from Masabi East, they're lower, but it's part-time teacher, part-time, so I think, you know, they work some time in the summer, so anyway, my piece is, I don't wanna be coming back to, you know, every year type deal, getting some type of scale put in place, obviously, it's an agreement, it's at the Board, so he, he proposed starting with seventy-one thousand, and then, so what I did is took off, similar to what the APWLS is, put six steps in there, so that some set, you know, obviously, your annual raise, or whatever the district tries to do, but I don't want it, in my mind, be a negotiated, again, the Board can do whatever they want each time, but he's under, I guess, the understanding that it would be similar, you're two, two years on each step, and then it's, for the most part, we got something in place, and so that's what's in front of you, the rest of the contract, for the most part, there was one other thing he asked, oh, there was, I think, one or two holidays that we, we added that were similar to one of the other contracts, the third of July, and there were two days there, other than that, everything is as was in the last contract, so...
I think it's hard to compare us to other schools right now, I mean, our numbers are decreasing, and I don't mind giving somebody more money, because, you know, he does a great job and he works hard, but when you're talking about other schools making eighty-four, we just can't compete with that, I don't think, but...
I mean, there's no doubt money is not, what would you call it?
Plentiful.
Plentiful.
There's not enough to go around, that's for sure.
Well, I mean, compared to, did you look at schools of our size, I mean, that's, that's basically all we could compare to, or size schools?
He brought two in, Masabi's smaller than us, so I, you know, they're, they're a little smaller, and I can get a full deal, a company days is technically, but that's why I got the suit, they paid for that piece, fifty-one, two fifty, but it's, it's half-time during the school year, and then half-time, you know, and if you're half-time, they're a hundred thousand, you know, but yeah, their summer work, you know, versus in this time of year, so I, I didn't get, you know, an exact hours or complete days, I can reach out for more, you know, but I guess that's gonna be like maintenance director, and, you know, all different combination, you know, where each district is gonna have a little combination, you know, some have assistants, some don't, you know, just like, you know, Mr. Will to help move, this is down in the corner, half-hour a day, or whatever, this year, bigger districts, same thing, you know, there's just more people.
So, do most districts have a step system in place?
Well, like I said, HIBBY does, and that's just what he brought in, the IS Consortium, he just gave me the assistants at seventy-one, the directors, the two that coordinate the director, and so I guess I can reach out and see if they have steps or not, they're both seventy-one, similar, but that's their assistant, isn't the person in charge.
Well, I mean, like Heather said, I'm about giving somebody a raise, you know, when, when the time comes for reviewing and all that, but I don't know if we wanna, at this point in time, commit to another...
He needs something for a contract.
Right.
You know, whether you...
But as far as the steps, I mean, do we, do we need to put, is that required that we put steps?
We don't have to.
I don't know what you guys think about that. Well, that's like with everybody's performance review, you either get a raise, or you don't.
Right.
I don't know, I guess I kind of agree with Heather that without further information about what, I mean, we have to look at school enrollment wise, our size, because then we can compare revenue expenditures, too, and see where we, we sit.
So, did you say that he was gonna get a raise in addition to the steps?
Not, not, this year would be seventy-one, that would be, you know, the step, I mean, if you don't, you take sixty-seven thousand and put one and a half percent, I'm guessing that's what everyone else got.
Yeah.
For the most part.
But then, same...
Then years down the road, just like your APWLS, it's coming in a few minutes, you know, those are, you know, you should say negotiate, you give a raise, you know, one and a half, two percent, whatever, you know, even though there's steps there, just like the teacher contract, or five, ten, there's steps in place.
Yeah.
But you negotiate, you know, some type of raise with those, you know, so I guess from my standpoint, I think it's, it is proven from the board's standpoint, to get some type of steps, all your other positions for the most part have, you know, get something in place so that people, you know, aren't coming back every time, I think I deserve more because of these six districts. If you want more info from other districts, if I can get, for the most part, what I really need.
I, I just don't, I don't wanna underpay the technology director, but I don't wanna be, you know, trying to keep up with Rapids or HIBBY or school visiting.
And that's where I guess I'm saying, HIBBY starts out at eighty-four, and goes up to ninety-seven, so we're starting out at seventy-one, and then I asked the Grand Rapids, it's a consortium, right now, whether there's steps or not, their director's at eighty-two, and their assistants at seventy-one, so that's why I guess I felt seventy-one was involved, you know, and again, like I said, I can get other schools if you want, I can get more info, I just, like I said, I wanted to see where that was, so I emailed the Super at Masabi East, and that's where he gave me back, it's a part-time, again, someone that's worked their way into it, and it's not a, your kitchen salary, you know, but, I don't really...
I would agree with you that seventy-one is involved, but when you start talking about E, it's just, I feel like in our situation, we should really take a deeper look.
Agreed.
Can we approve the, his contract?
You can approve, it's a one-year deal.
We can approve the contract with, can we say without the steps at this time?
Yeah, and the steps, again, it has to come back, it would come back to you next year, and then I told him I would like to get a two-year agreement in place, just like most of the others are, so yeah, that, I think that's just...
Because, I mean, you said he started, it was at sixty-seven, so sixty-seven to seventy-one is a nice raise.
Oh, yeah, there'd be no doubt for this.
I mean, I don't, I don't know if I can really ask this, but, I mean, we were paying Dave Scoref to help, Mike, and they were...
Last year.
So we do have that money now that Dave's with us, and we, could you look at it that way?
I would say this was kept down a little bit, but that was in addition, Dave, if you combine the two, we spent a little more money last year than Dave did, they got a hundred thousand, did, you know, so, we put, remember, we were doing forty thousand, not positive, sixty-seven, we spent more last year to try and have a good transition, and I think, not gonna, it did go as, you know, there's always some hiccups, I wanna see if he was really wrong there, again, many years of experience.
But he was with us for how long?
Correct, correct. So, but yeah, we can come up with something different, or can look at, get more information to build a step system of some sort, or whatever, but looking, like I said, I just took, that percentage was the same, like we had with someone.
Seventy-one seems fair. And then do it on a yearly basis?
If you want it on a year or two-year basis, we're becoming...
Or a two-year basis, um...
You don't have a kind of sense of, second stones.
Seventy, seventy-one, um, pretty fair. I don't, you know, I just think we put this on a annual basis, you know, since you have, then you're looking at your current financial situation when you, when you review that technology, technology director's position, you know, there's a, you have some basis for it.
I don't disagree, I, I think it, I'm just being honest with you, you know, just like the Atwill policy, there's some steps predefined, you know, that when you're at two years, four years, six years. Again, you have to be doing your job, but it takes it out of the picture is, like I say, for me, you know, for a certain amount of time, other than the norm, whatever the normal, you know, raise is for the most of the groups going through. That's the only reason I would recommend coming up with something now is, you know, it avoids, when I say now, in the near future, getting something in place that these are the steps that you do your job, you know, around long-term that it's in place, whether it be a teacher or five, ten, or principals or Atwills or whatever, some predefined steps. So, but we can come up with, that this was just something to have in, you know, for kind of a expect hereafter those ones are... But again, if we come back to the board, you know, so if this is not what we want, I want to make, I think that here's your contract for this year, we're going to develop something or not have anything come...
I think one year with the salary increase that's sent forth there is...
Agreed.
Thank you. Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed, motion carried. Thirteen point zero policy consent. Thirteen point one, policy four twenty-six, Atwill, first reading for Pueblo in August. Thirteen point two, policy five thirty-three, wellness. Thirteen point three, policy seven twenty-one, uniform grant guidance policy regarding federal revenue sources. Thirteen point four, follow the elementary handbook. Thirteen point five, follow the high student handbook. I have a motion to approve the policy consent agenda items as presented. Second, second motion, second A for the discussion.
Couple of things, first of all, um, the two handbooks, just so you're aware, you know, phone, phone numbers, um, update, things like that, don't pay attention to it, you know, because that's several numbers things, that'll be finished, the policies themselves, or I shouldn't say policy, the rules and procedures and stuff, um, they should be in place, some corrections, some, you know, try to clean them up, just like a contract every time. Um, just, um, keep notes as you go through the year of things that need further defining or whatever, so those are before you. Um, the Atwill policy, and again, this is one, I, I, two things I overlooked because we were cleaning it up, trying to get it to not refer to five, ten. Um, I pulled the community ed director, we had a folder piece of language in there where Inzamo used to be full-time director, and when I pulled that out, I, um, I omitted the two pieces in there, that these are not new, these are in there of how they're working. She works, the community ed director, um, teaches art as well and has one hour a week during the school year and then, um, time in the summer, and the same with the enrichment court. So, those two pieces are not new. Two pieces that have come up, um, recently, and it's something that, that when the group worked on getting this updated, we didn't talk about and we need to be clear before we go forth. Um, we, we defined or agreed to have, uh, set the work years two-hundred-and-sixty days. And so, the question came up to me at least, what would you do? Now, this is for last year, there were two-hundred-and-sixty-two working days. So, for salary people, they already work those days. And so, I guess, you know, our, I hate that. So, for the salary people, I guess my thought, we didn't define it, you know, in the Atwill policy, we would be to give them the vacation. Um, unless you want to put in, this is effective two thousand and sixteen, you know, and I mean, and I would say, it's a double sword and, um, number two kind of goes along with it as well. We're going to change the, um, vacation schedule. And I guess I thought we talked about, um, saying effective two thousand and sixteen, seventeen, school year, um, I can't find that, my notes on that piece on the, um, on the, uh, holidays, I do have it where that was written. Um, and so, the question comes out, which year is that effective? And then the person that brought it, Dave Field, they thought we were talking two thousand fifteen, sixteen. Obviously, it's past, but if someone would have made a jump, we would have to give them, you know, if they took a step up, um, and so, there was one set of years in there. Um, I don't know what everyone else remembers. Like I said, in my notes I had, or in what I, we gave them, had in the, uh, added new days in there, had effective two thousand sixteen, seventeen. The other one, I put it in here when I wrote this, but I do not see whether we talked about it or not.
I can't recall, that would have been my assumption, that would be effective sixteen, seventeen, but I don't know.
And it does affect some, that's, that's the person that came and talked to you, so, of course, it affects everyone in a sense.
Right.
Some place and time, those are the two pieces.
Well, I think probably then, just my thoughts that, you know, moving forward, it would be sixteen, seventeen coming here, you know, changes would be effective going forward rather than retroactive, but...
It's the will of the board, I mean, both of them are very simple.
Right.
Paid holidays.
May I speak? It was never our understanding that it would be sixteen. And it was not brought up verbally. If it was put on the sheet, we certainly would have did. Um, I would ask them that we pull it and we go back to the committee and have further discussion because there's some misunderstandings here. One more please.
Like I said, I, the, the one piece wasn't right, the paid holidays. And again, whether it was, the other one, I can't see where I had anything in writing, whether it was or wasn't. So, if you want to go back and have some more discussion, you can. If you want to have it start in fifteen, you know, you can. I mean, it's, it's the committee's, you know what I'm saying, we're a board that's old now.
Right, right.
But I don't want to put it one way or the other, or, you know what I'm saying, because that's why I brought it up now, because I didn't want it to be an issue, you know, once it was approved, now, you're, you're able to turn it up prior to you do approve it.
Yeah. I think I don't want the additional two floating holiday, either vacation days or whatever, I think that's appropriate.
I, I think you do involve the same, there's been, and, and, you know, if you're into paid holidays, effective beginning of the contract, you probably should do vacation beginning of the contract. You know, paid, that, you know, that's, that's my thought, but again, it's, it's, it's a board's decision because they're similar, just in different areas.
I think, right, no calls, come on.
Go back.
Go back to discussion or go back to two thousand fifteen, the start of the...
Let's go back to discussion. You have, you have concern here at all?
We do, yeah.
It shouldn't be review.
Unless you might go the other way. If you're going to go from the start of the contract, there is a concern inside you. Are you going to do it, maybe, contract, there is concern. Is that a fair statement?
That's a fair statement, I mean, I think we could, in discussion, we could rationalize why we feel that we should go back to fifteen. Would be the questions regarding that, and we could certainly lay out our reasons behind it.
I'm willing to go back to discussion.
Okay. Can we pull it then, go back? Did you say only affects one employee?
Well, different pieces affect it, the vacation, and again, I get, look, I was told that only the person that brought it in told me it only affected, meaning if you start a new schedule fifteen compared to starting sixteen, again, I get checked to make sure that person was right. I mean, it affects some others, but they would have gotten involved in it.
Okay.
Um, the, the two-hundred-and-sixty days obviously affect salary people. And the paid holidays would obviously affect everyone. So, I mean, there's three different pieces. We, we can go back to either approve them all, I guess, nine thousand a year, approve them start of the contract, or go back and have a discussion.
Both things are fine, go back and learn my, and bring that again.
When would you like to meet?
Turn.
Okay?
Yeah.
Well, is that committee, Gordy's, the new unit, uh, tomorrow?
Not just behind comments.
About eight-thirty and eleven o'clock, eight-thirty AM and eleven. So, either in between or after.
Between?
After, to do it between.
I wouldn't...
Will you be done by eight-thirty, I mean, you say in between?
Well, I'm on the radio at eight-thirty, that's fifteen minutes.
Can I call? Sure.
Right.
That's good.
So, I would like to make a motion that we remove item thirteen point one from policy consent.
All approve that, all move that.
I made a motion.
Give it. All second.
All right, so motion is second, remove item thirteen point one. Any further discussion on removal? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? Motion carry, remove. Okay, um, can I have a motion to approve the remaining policy consent agenda items with thirteen point one removed?
So...
You're, excuse me, but that's just for approval in August, that was just, you received it. You don't need any...
Okay, all right, not so much now. All right, so our earlier motion was moved by Heather, seconded.
That's no longer needed.
Not at all?
No, because you, you pulled the one...
Remove one.
Receiving.
The rest are hires.
You're just getting them this most for...
All right, okay, got it, I get it, I'm with you. Okay, uh, MSJ reports, Kevin?
Um, several things here, first of all, um, I think most of here where I went down to a training for this planning implementation grant that we got, it was very good training on Friday, other than in the cities and having to come home on Friday night. Um, but I think it has some good opportunity, we have a position posted as far as hiring a, um, person to lead that, anyone who has ideas, encourage people because that's one of the biggest pieces to success, is having the right person in there that is willing to work with the community, work with the school, um, being a go-getter, if you will. Like I said, it's, um, we saw some good examples of things that are done, it's very encouraging data. Um, that's the first kind of six months, they're, again, they work with us, they have people that helps whoever the person hired, um, will do some surveying, they'll use our Minnesota student survey data, but they will also do, there's some surveys that they do with parents and some students. Using that data, there's some very good trend. And then, there, we're the third cohort, it's a five-year cohort. The first cohort, even after they've been done here, showing numbers still going down and they've actually surpassed the state, um, the state average, you know, the goal. So, they went from, they take people of highest need, um, for student, Minnesota student survey. And so, like us, we're, we're up there as well, what the student must claim as alcohol. So, hopefully, as time goes on, we will see the same thing. So, I put it out there, we are going to do, um, an article with the journal here now that we've had kind of initial training. But the biggest piece, if you know someone on the deadline, I think is, uh, Wednesday, make a phone call, they're going to get that, to get that in. So, that's one piece. Um, I wanted to publicly thank, um, uh, Bluzey for donating some chips. We got, I think it was seven or eight loads of chips, the city graciously hauled them for us. And, um, a volunteer group that was in, um, with the Covenant Church from Otis State, cleaned up the playground areas as well as, they spent a week doing stuff. Um, that was a couple of days of spreading, cleaning. They looked very nice, they filled up to where they need, I think where they need to be. Um, they painted, like, the four-square of some of the leaves on the sidewalk of the playground area at the elementary. Um, they painted the concession stand element, um, the football field as well as two of the locker rooms in there. And so, I guess I would take all the groups. We also had some local volunteers that worked with those groups. I went out and helped for a couple of hours one day. Um, but it's, it's amazing how a little paint and a few chips or whatever...
Yeah, it's very nice.
Add some new life, if you will, back into our, our place. Oh, they painted the gold posts as well, um, up there as well as behind here, so. And a person free-handed, I'm very impressed their artistic ability.
In the rain.
Half, who knows?
It's that girl from out of town that was with that group, and at first it was a lavender color and I thought, man, this is not going to be good, but that was just kind of a backup line, you know, so. Um, thanks to all the groups involved. Um, school forest program, um, just wanted to highlight, um, I, I met with Mayor Anderson, um, the issue with our school forest is we're not using it, um, because it's twenty miles down in Gray. Um, and so, they, their fourteen kind of use it or lose it type deals, so I'm working with the state. They're all on board, they don't want us to lose it, but we can designate more areas. So, we're working with, um, the River View area over here, we can get that designated as school forest, because our science classes and some groups go that way. As well as a piece of our product delivered by Falls El, then we can do our school forest report. We can, you know, log whatever activities we get, we don't designate that we did or left this place or that place. So, you see something in the paper, um, Mayor has, there's an agreement, a non-financial agreement they're looking at, enable their, the city council prior to next, we're going to commit to you. So, I just wanted you aware of that. And lastly, um, something you may be aware or not, we got another, um, heads up on another. We've had a, a group by the name of Sports Media that is, I don't know what you want to call a business or whatever, that supposedly has contacted it for several years. Um, businesses in the area, um, asking for donations on like a advertising calendar. It has nothing to do with the school. We put it on Facebook before, um, I was contacted by a business, I want to say probably four months ago, um, and they paid it last year and they were questioning it this year and they've never seen anything on the calendar, so they're aware. Um, and then I got another group in town, it's a, you know, it's a county business that was...
And then I got another group in town, it's a, it's an accounting business, that was approached, and they summed up with this, gave us heads up, we reported it, I did as well as the second group, put in a complaint to the Attorney General, we've gotten a response back, they're trying to, you know, they're doing what they can. They've also asked that we, and I, I will do it tomorrow, file with the US Postal Service as well as Federal Trade Commission, but we, we're being aware of another business today now that has donated last year, and is being hounded now because of the setup on automatic withdrawal and cancel, but, so I guess I'm claiming that if anyone is aware of anyone, give us, the, the Attorney General wants, you know, I have a pile of forms, if there's other people we come across, they want a form filled out, so they, no, because it's, I mean, it's false advertisement to say the least, because it has nothing to do with us whether they actually print them and publish a calendar or whatever somewhere where it's never seen in the falls, who knows? But I just, I feel bad because it's groups that support us, and they're doing it because they think it is the students or the groups, so I guess I'm just throwing it out there to make it easy, so, I mean, bad, unfortunately, that was all I got. Oh, the only other thing I was just going to mention, make sure, anyone again, the production places that you passed, everyone is aware, because there is some confusion, I just wanted to, the, the four places are three people on here that are up, we are adding the seventh position is the post four, and then Mr. Holt's position, if we, he'll have someone seated here, Roxanne will be next, that is that extra, so there's technical positions, hopefully we get some interested residents to August second, or by November twenty. So if you know of anyone where you're interested on August second, to start the line.
That's all I have.
Mayor's votes? All right, motion to adjourn the meeting at six-thirteen. Second. I have the motion and I second.